Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, glad to have you back by the way, glad you're feeling better. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Attorney Murphy. Absent. Mr. Collins.
Here.
Ms. Gresham.
Here.
Ms. Hearst.
Here.
Ms. Monroe Naylor.
Here.
Mayor Sarno.
Present, will we all please rise from open silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as its basis for all.
Thank you very much, for the record, Attorney, School Committee man Attorney Pete Murphy is unable to attend, he has a family engagement out of town. Do we have a motion on the floor to go executive session and we will be coming back right into session?
So moved.
A motion?
Actually, I think we have to read.
Yes.
Oh yeah, read the motion, yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A.
Your mic, the mic, yeah. Thanks, Hosway.
You convinced us to shut it off so.
Yeah, I know.
And make a motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Exemption 3, for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to pending litigation, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the school committee.
Motion made by Mr. Con.
We will return to a session.
Motion made by Mr. Con was seconded by, uh.
Second.
Ms. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Hearst originally and Gresham. All call voters required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Attorney Mur. Absent, Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hearst.
Yes.
Ms. Monroe Naylor.
Yes.
Mayor Sarno.
Yes, one is fishing boat, this man passes. We'll see you shortly, thank you.
... And this is it. There are few to me that have been able to do this. There are few that have not. It's just one. It's just something that I'm sure that I can do. Okay, what's up? Um, okay. 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 I suppose. And that's it. And we're good. So, yeah. Okay. Awesome. And that's it. Yeah, we're good. So, yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah.
Oh, Sway, are we ready to go? Thank you. Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the rule.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Gresham?
Here.
Ms. Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Bruno Naylor? Mayor Sarno?
Present for the record, attorney, school committee attorney Peter Murphy has a family engagement on town. He sends his regrets. And for myself, the school committee, our apologies for running a little bit late after the executive session. We thank you for your patience and understanding. Well, now, all please rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now, for the, what we've been waiting for, to hear from all these excellent students. And it's great to see all the family members here. We had a great convocation, we've had a great opening week of school, and that's because of all of you. So, we have the middle school student representatives. And first in the house is South End Middle School with their great principal Yara Gonzalez and Safi Mohammed, 7th grade. Come on down. Oh, you got a whole crew here, Kalil Paulino. So you got two. Am I correct? Double header, way to go. Oh, wait a minute, Mike. Like your T-shirts.
Thank you.
The podium is yours.
Hi, I'm Safi.
And I'm Khaled Ann.
We are here from South End Middle School.
School committees, Superintendent Denal, and our esteemed guest. Happy New Years and thank you for having us.
I'm in 7th grade and Khaled is in 8th grade. The school year is off to a great start. Our schedule has some exciting new features such as an acceleration block where students receive either intervention in math or ELA. Or like me, they get to participate in an enrichment. Some of my friends are participating in early literacy intervention during the acceleration block. In time of the day, I get to accelerate in my, accelerate my learning in creative writing class. Well, it has just begun, we have already discussed the many genres of fiction such as fairy tales, dystopian fiction, and sci-fi. I am in the process of selecting the genre for my first story.
Like Safi, I'm also able to participate in brand-new enrichment classes at SEMS, which is algebra. In algebra, we are using variables and equations to show patterns and solve problems that sound, that this sounds challenging, but it's also exciting because it makes me feel like I am prepared for high school. I am looking forward to how algebra will help me to understand how math connects to real life, like figuring out costs or comparing situations. Math has taught me to think logically and not give up when problems seem too hard. My goal is to become more confident and prepared for high school and eventually college.
This year, SEMS' schedule also includes a brand-new college and career readiness block on Fridays.
This block allows SEMS students to explore careers and also provides us with opportunities to prepare for learning after high school.
SEMS is thrilled to continue to offer a variety of extracurricular activities.
And I participate in them all. I love participating in mock trial and being a part of the SEMS Student Council. Last year, I was also involved in yearbook club and I played soccer and basketball. This year, I have joined our podcast club as well.
Thank you for having us.
And for believing in us and supporting us in all of our exciting changes at South End Middle School.
You have an attorney to be, in what positions you play in soccer?
Um, I play center, oh, in soccer?
Yeah.
Oh, goalie.
Me too, I was crazy going high school and college, way to go, alright. Okay, excellent. Uh, we now have STEM Middle School is in the house with Principal Andrea Williams and Amaya Maddox, who I had the pleasure of meeting earlier today. And STEM Middle School Ethan Parata is also here. And STEM Middle Academy Johnny Castro, 8th grader is here. Come on down, Amaya, go get 'em.
Hello, Dr. Denal, Mayor Sarno, and school committee members. My name is Johnny Castro, I'm an 8th grader at STEM Middle School. I will be discussing the pros of attending this middle school of STEM and the changes I want to see made for our community. I can proudly say that the time I've spent at STEM, I've excelled in my curriculums. STEM has made a great impact on my grades, my educational prowess, and my ability to learn. In the past two years, I've, in the past three years I've been at STEM. I've played for the soccer team, the volleyball team. Both were amazing. Amazing experiences. At STEM, I had the chance to go to Westfield College.
You're doing fine, Johnny, you're doing fine. What position in soccer did you play?
Played goalie.
Alright, alright. We got some kinship going, alright, good job. Anything more, Johnny?
I'm good.
You're good, alright Johnny.
Hi, Dr. Denal, Mayor Sarno, and school committee members. My name is Ethan Parata, and what I want to see happening in my school, STEM Middle Academy, is more sport teams like football and cheer teams. I would also, I also would like to see more after-school activities like students being able to help and tutor each other, to be able to progress more in their grades and be able to be better in school. Being a student tutor would also allow students to grow as leaders and be positive models to others. The teachers and students at STEM really get along. Teachers are helpful and comforting students, giving us time and empathy, helping us to push through our problems. Teachers and staff show that they care about the students.
Nice job. Alright, Amaya, go get 'em. Yeah, you can lower that, don't worry.
I'm too short for this.
No, you're, you're fine, Amaya, you're fine, dear.
Hello, Dr. Denal, Mayor Sarno, and school committee members. My name is Amaya Maddox, I'm a 6th grade student at STEM Middle School. Today, I would like to present to you suggestions that will motivate students to come to school. Education, students believe educational games will improve learning, it will also keep them engaged. Students would like to receive classes in advanced technology as that will provide hands-on education, food. Breakfast is often considered to be the most important meal of the day. They should be given more healthy options like a variety of fruits in the morning. Teachers. Teachers, students should be given more meetings with teachers to focus on their learning progress or barriers. Extra recess, by having extra recess, it allows students opportunities to relax and refocus throughout the day. Not all students can sit all day without letting out some energy. Reward, classes with perfect attendance should receive prizes such as stress-down day or pizza parties, and that is all I have for you.
Good job, Amaya. Good job, Amaya, you had your bodyguards with you too there, so that's good. Mom, see, she hit it out of the ballpark. Okay. And now we have Zenetti Montessori in the house, Principal Tara Clark, Kelly Shay, and Alejandro Recca. If I pronounce your name wrong, uh, please correct me. And Adriana Lopez, and again, your godmother does a great job for me, and the lectures there, Chelsea, come on down. Oh, wait a minute, Maya Soto Landro. Oh, I'm sorry. Great, all right, thank you, Doctor.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Denal, members of the school committee and peers. My name is Alejandro Recca, and I'm an eighth grader scholar at Zenetti. I'm here tonight with pride to celebrate some of our past, present, and future middle school successes. Last year, our school was honored with trophies and recognition for all our achievements on the 2024 MCAS test. We made it into the MCAS 500 Club. If you didn't know what that is, it's where schools get recognized and students that get scores higher than 500. Zenetti was recognized in both ELA and math, and we hope to set the bar higher. And I will be back in the club again for 2025 to continue showcase all the hard work being done every day by my peers and myself at Zenetti. Another academic success we're excited about this year is a chance for eighth graders to take Algebra I, and this is the first year that's gonna, this is gonna happen. A select group of students were chosen, and this gives us an early start on what most students don't learn until their freshman year in high school. I am proud to say I am one of the students selected for this opportunity. A lot of success at Zenetti also comes from strong bonds we build with our teachers from over the past year or two. And whether in class, our teachers give us support, even if we're not in their class, because of this, we know their teaching styles and expectations. This makes learning easier and it helps us create real family, community at Zenetti. We are very thankful for that. Thank you for your time. Now, I would like to pass the mic to my classmate Mia, who will talk about student government.
Hi, my name is Mia Soto Landau, and I'm here to talk about the student government at Zenetti. Over the past few years, Zenetti hasn't had a student-led student government, so this year, our school plans on starting a new student government and continuing to work with the student council. This year, this means helping students understand how real-world civics work and helping them have a voice. Our school will be hosting an election for middle school students, where students can run to be elected for certain positions. Doing this can give students a sense of real-life scenarios and understanding for what might be going on in the world. By helping students understand this, they'll understand what might be right and wrong in a community and speak up about it. It'll also help model how the local and US government work. This year, students who are in student government and student council will take action on important topics that are positive for the school and student-led. This will give students even more a student voice, and we will also have to focus on promoting good mental health. And in the future, we hope to plan events like a run-walk and special fundraisers. Now, I'm gonna pass the mic to Adriana, another eighth-grade student.
Nice job, Mia. Go get them, Adriana.
Thank you, Mia. I'm Adriana Lopez, and I'd like to talk about extracurricular activities at Zenetti. Partaking in after-school activities such as sports, tutoring, student council, or empowerment club are important parts of middle school life. Not only do they improve your physical and mental health, but they can help both students and teachers.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine.
They can help students and teachers, as well as different groups of students across different grade levels, who may not usually socialize or work together to become a closer community. Sports tutoring and empowerment club have taught new skills that we might not learn in classrooms or if we were just sitting at home doing nothing after school. They've helped students realize something new that they've, that they might be really good at. For example, I've learned how much I enjoy volleyball after joining the volleyball team. And in the winter, I learned how to manage, by helping teachers manage the basketball team. Aside from all our sports teams, another important extracurricular we do at Zenetti is the empowerment club. The empowerment club focuses on promoting good mental health and wellness. It is meant to help students find help when needed and to encourage kindness throughout the whole school and community. In the past year, they've held many events that help promote positivity throughout the school. We've gotten, we've gotten the chance to attend the annual empowerment youth voices summit near Boston as a part of Mental Health Awareness Month. We'd like to thank you all for your attention.
Good job, Adriana, Mia, Alejandro, good job. Okay, last but not least, the eclectic Springfield Renaissance is in the house. I see Principal Derek Wright is here. And we have Giselle Rodriguez and Najali, if I pronounce her wrong, Lazada. Come on down, seventh graders. Nice sweatshirts.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Superintendent, and school committee members. My name is Giselle Rodriguez, and I am from, I am from the Renaissance Springfield Public School.
Hi, my name is Najali, and I'm from, I'm also from Springfield Renaissance School, and I'm in seventh grade.
And we are here to discuss our sixth-grade expedition on how to make football safer. Our guiding question was, what adjustments can we make to the game of football to make it safer for the long run? We had something called kickoffs, where we were, where we met the Springfield College professor, and we did an activity called the egg drop. It, um, and it helped us see the actual visual of how the materials that are in the football helmets are important for when it comes to protecting the players from getting a concussion.
During this expedition, we also got to go to UMass, and it was nice to talk to the players and see how their bodies work when they're out on the field. And it was also nice to ask them questions on how to play football safer. And, yeah.
A classwork highlight we did was when we watched a movie in English about football and concussions, while we answered some questions on a packet about the movie. And this helped us learn that concussions are so dangerous to the point where you can get very sick if you keep getting it and develop CTE in your brain.
A meaningful activity that I thought was good was, was when me and my partners would work on our posters together and have fun collaborating and making ideas together.
We had also done data presentations to Mr. Early, where we went to our library and presented our posters that we did during math class about how to make football safer using the information we collected during previous math classes. Then after we presented our posters, Mr. Early presented to us about spring, about what the Springfield Public Schools have already been doing.
Throughout the whole expedition, we've learned how to pull out data and use it when it is needed. And we also learned how to play flag football more safer. Thank you for taking the time to hear our presentation. Have a good day.
Nice job. And just to the, the viewing, to the viewing audience, these young ladies, presentation here, statistics, comments, and medical things. So, again, always the eclectic Renaissance taken. Well, that was fantastic. Again, thank you for your patience, and you really made our evening. Uh, we'll have a one-minute recess. You're more than welcome to stay for the regularly scheduled meeting. But great job to the students, the family members, and the administration of the schools. Thank you very, very much. Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for your patience, understanding, we're gonna have a longer executive session. As you were watching, we had a great, great middle school student update, they were all fantastic. Mister clerk, please call the roll.
Mister Gonzalez?
Here.
Attorney Murphy?
Attorney Murphy, for the record, sends his threats, he has a family event out of town.
Absent, Mister Collins?
Here.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Hurst?
Present.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Present.
Mayor Sarno?
Present, if we could all please rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'm sure Dr. Denel, Superintendent Denel will speak about it in the report, but we had a great, great convocation, and we had a great opening week of school. Congratulations, students, family members, and the whole SPS administration and staff. Uh, with that, we'll go into approval of the minutes, a vote to approve the minutes of school committee regular meeting for August 21st. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
Motion by Mister Gonzalez is second. Second by Ms. Gresham, roll call voters required, Mister clerk, please call the roll.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent, Mister Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, morning's official votes matter passes, thank you. Voting items, uh, to approve, a vote to approve the FY 2026 amended budget. Uh, please Superintendent Dr. Denel, I know CFO, Chief Roach, Pat Roach is here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and our magnificent and brilliant students continue to impress us and wow us. Thank you to the administrators who thoroughly prepared them. And I love the school pride with the swag that each one of them wore. So, we applaud you and appreciate you, and thank you so much. As, take, as we take a look at our budget, oh, excuse me, as we take a look at clean energy and respecting our environment, we want to make sure that we are taking full advantage of all the grants that are available to us. So Chief Roach and his team have done an excellent, oh, excuse me, I was doing the A, sorry.
Supprile.
I'm just lumping it all together. Okay, I'm gonna start over. The amendment to the budget, come on up, Chief Roach. As you know, that we have award-winning budget department. Chief Roach and his team do an excellent job keeping us fiscally responsible and staying within our financial means. We all know in the news, there are some issues that we are facing from the federal government. However, Chief Roach and his team are doing an excellent job to ensure that we are balanced and making sure that every precaution is taken to balance our fiscal 2026 budget. Thank you so much, Chief Roach, for your hard work. Please share with us any additional information you have.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Pat.
Um, this is our annual house meeting we do in the fall. Um, as you know, the school committee passes their budget first, then the city passes theirs, and then finally, the state passes the, um, final budget. So, we have to go back and just do some adjusting so that we're in line with the state and the city. So, overall, this is turning into a 1.172229, um, decrease to the budget. We're decreasing transportation by a million dollars, um, increasing family and community engagement by 25,000, and a decrease in school operations, a net of 197,229. Um, what that really is, is it's a, um, increase in the cost to charter and school choice. Um, there was a, the state's final budget had a significant increase to charter and school choice. Um, the governor also vetoed the charter reimbursement that would have offset that, so unfortunately, it ended up being a cost to our budget. Um, we're hoping that if the costs do come in that way, that the governor, towards the end of the year, will either increase the charter tuition reimbursement or that these costs won't, um, come through as, as they are in the state budget. We are reducing the salary reserve by, uh, 1,706,099. There's no impact there, that was a rough account we had. And, um, the only other thing I want to point out is that we, we are leaving a deficit in the charter tuition of 2,465,394 because we're hoping the expenses come in lower than what's projected by the state. So, happy to answer any questions.
But we're, I mean, we're hopeful, maybe there's a, the governor with a supplemental or something, maybe they might cover it up.
Yes, sir.
Cover that up, okay. Any questions or comments, Mister Roach? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
移動
Motion by Ms. Gresham is second.
Second.
Second, Mister Collins, roll call voters required. Mister clerk, please call the roll.
Mister Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent, Mister Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, morning's official votes as matter passes, thank you. And thank you, Trini, it's great to have you back and that you're fit. He is a vote to approve the expenditure of $5 million for the Mass Clean Energy Center, uh, Mass, uh, Clean Energy Center Green School Works Grant. Pat, uh, Superintendent Dr. Denel, I know Patrick Roach is here, John, uh, John Carrigan does a great job, Tom Ash. You've really, uh, upgraded, uh, majority, not getting close to all our schools. Superintendent Denel, please.
Thank you so much. We know that it's important to create an environment that is conducive to teaching and learning. This grant, this very generous grant, will help us to upgrade the HVAC system at Alfred Glickman Elementary School. We want to make sure that all of our schools, and this is also part of a plan, Mister Mayor, as well as members of the school committee and listening audience, we want to make sure that all of our schools have air conditioning as well as clean air to breathe and learn in. And this is all part of a long plan, a multi-year plan, I would say, that would definitely help us achieve that very goal. So, we're grateful for the partnership, and we're very grateful for the funding. And Chief Pat Roach is here to answer any questions and further explain this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Denel, and I believe we're probably down to less than 18 or 15 schools to finish. And, and this is, uh, because the award-winning finance is sustainable. This is a sustainable plan, which we don't take away, uh, from the front end of, uh, teaching on it. So, uh, thank you, Pat, to John Carrigan, who's a walking encyclopedia, and to, uh, director facilities and, uh, parks, Tom Ash for their work there. Mister Roach, please.
Um, thank you, yes, we're very happy to receive this $5 million grant. Thank you. Yes, we're very happy to receive this $5 million grant from the Mass Clean Energy Center. This is part of our aggressive campaign to get air conditioning into our schools as fast as possible. As the School Committee knows, we just recently completed 10 schools with Esser funds, so that's a pretty exciting, that was pretty exciting to finish those 10 schools. We have a couple of schools in process that are already funded, and now with Glickman, here's another one. We have eight, we have eight grant applications out, including MSBA applications as well. So we're working on our next 12 schools, and we should, in the next couple of years, have AC in every school.
And I commend Dr. Denal and Pat, the finance team. We used the Essers funds for one-time improvements, unlike some other districts that use it for reoccurring costs and faced cutbacks and layoffs on it. So commend you all on that. Now, any questions or comments from School Committee members?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Chair Naylor, please.
Just a quick question, kind of following up on the comment that Mr. Mayor made, is that we would like to have an updated list on what schools it were. I know there was a significant number of schools that we've already worked on, and so just being able to know exactly what those schools are and also where we're going. Because as you know, I think we mentioned this in the subcommittee, we get calls all the time when it starts to get hot, like, when are y'all letting people out, and why are you keeping them? And it's gonna be 100 degrees. And it's like, we don't want to have to cancel school because of the heat, right? We want them to be able to still learn. So I'm super excited about being able to add more schools to the roster of schools that have air conditioning. So thank you for this spearheading this project, as always, Mr. Roach.
This summer was the first summer we've had all of our programs and buildings with AC, so that was a pretty big accomplishment this summer.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Roach? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Naylor is second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Collins. Roll call voters required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy? Absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, morning's fishing votes matter passes. Thank you. Seize the vote to approve the updated competency determination requirements per the new guidelines of DESI. Superintendent Dr. Denal, I know Dr. Yolanda Johnson's here also, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. As you know, there was a statewide vote that changed how we can use the Massachusetts assessment that we know of as the MCAS. That vote required us as a school district to take another look at how we will meet the competency determination. The wisdom and the will of the School Committee prevailed, and we ensured that we created a policy for the members of the class of 2025. However, DESI met, and over the summer, they released new guidelines, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that we update and revise our policy to reflect their current guidance. So as of July 2025, we have new guidance, and we must have it completed in a timely manner in order to meet the DESI identified deadline. Dr. Johnson and several people at Central Offices have done an extensive job in researching the new guidance from DESI and ensuring that we have a draft to present to you all that is in full alignment with those guidelines that were released in July 5th. So I invite to the podium Dr. Johnson, as well as Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development Terry Poe, as well as Chief Bob Lawrence.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Denal, and School Committee members. We are here to present to you the path to graduation competency determination revision policy. So this is a draft that we've worked on, so I'm here with my esteemed colleagues to present to you this evening. So Bob, come on up.
Good evening. We'll start with a summary of key information, how we got here. In November 2024, the Massachusetts voters, as you know, approved a ballot question that removed the use of MCAS as the sole basis for meeting the requirements of the state's competency determination. The School Committee approved this district's competency determination policy on March 27th, 2025. And then in May, as Dr. Denal alluded to, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to amend its regulations on the competency determination. The amended regulations require that districts develop a competency determination policy that details how students will meet new regulations. And as recently as June of this, July of this year, DESI provided districts with guidance and policy submission process guidelines, which is the purpose for our item here this evening. And districts will be audited for compliance of CD policies. The district's CD policy must be submitted to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by December 31st, 2025. And so I will turn this over to Dr. Yolanda Johnson. Okay, excellent. So I'm gonna stand for one more slide and talk a little bit about the requirements that are changed specifically in the guidance that DESI released this past July. So this is new information. And so DESI has clarified that students must show mastery of skills in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, and satisfactorily complete all relevant coursework aligned to the standards measured by the high school English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science MCAS assessments administered in 2023. To show mastery, a student must successfully complete in accordance with the district's grading policy, one, final assessment for a course, two, capstone or portfolio project, or three, an equivalent measure identified in the district's CD policy. And then finally, to satisfactorily complete coursework, a student must earn full credit in accordance with the district's grading policies in the courses required.
Thanks, Bob.
Good evening. I'm gonna walk us through the course requirements and the considerations. So as you see on this slide, the first column shows the policy, the requirements for the policy that was approved in March of 2025. And at that time, students needed to receive a passing grade in English IX and English X. Moving forward, if this policy is approved, students would need to earn two years of credits in English IX, X, XI, or XII. So it just moves the band from two years, grades IX and X, through grades IX through XII is the recommendation. Students had to pass Algebra I in Geometry, and that remains the same for the recommendation. Students needed to have one laboratory science course that was Biology, Physics, or Chemistry. The recommended change for the policy would be a Lab Science or a Technology and Engineering course, and that would be for the class of 2026. But for the class of 2027, students would also need what I just shared, plus a year in US English I or US English II. Okay? I mean, US History. I'm sorry, US History. So now we're gonna move to the considerations. The considerations are really our safety nets to ensure that our competency determination policy meets the needs of our diverse student population. So on this slide, you will see here that students who do not satisfactorily complete coursework, meeting the required minimum passing grade in a prescribed courses as previously outlined, may enroll in summer school, credit recovery, or be scheduled to take additional coursework by their school counselor to meet the academic standards as outlined in the Massachusetts curriculum framework. Also, students who do not successfully meet the mastery requirements shall be provided with recovery opportunities as well, which may include a performance-based assessment, completing a capstone or portfolio project, or an equivalent measure such as a college-level course. It could be advanced placement, a dual enrollment course, or an independent study, or specialized project. Next slide, please. We also have provisions for our students who, because all students must meet the competency determination as outlined in Section 1 of our policy, we may do so with the applicable accommodations and modifications for our students on 504 plans, our students who have individualized educational plans, students who may have significant cognitive disabilities, or complex significant disabilities, or are multi-language learners. And that also includes our out-of-district students who may also be placed in residential placements. Also, we may consider certifying ESL courses for students, as for students meeting the ELA requirement for the competency determination only at the foundational levels of English proficiency, and that means our students that are at Level 1 or Level 2 per the access assessment. Students must also meet the graduation requirements. So it's the CD requirements plus the local graduation requirements to earn a diploma from Springfield Public Schools. And then we have a provision for students who might transfer into a Springfield Public High School at any point in their high school career, and that would require a transcript review conducted by the school counselor. And if the CD is not granted, the student and the family may request an appeal, and that decision is rendered by the school principal. Okay. So now we'll move on to former graduates, and Bob St. Lawrence will lead us through that portion.
Thank you. As we did this year, we will continue a process for former graduates who did not graduate. And so SPS will review requests submitted through an online application twice a year for former students for that period between 2003 and 2024, graduates who may be eligible for a diploma. Review periods will take place in the summer and the winter. So we've defined two periods where those applications can be submitted for our review. Former graduates must meet the district's current CD policy at the time they apply for a review of diploma eligibility.
Here are our next steps. Next steps are to merge the aligned coursework list to meet this competency determinations in English Language Arts, Math, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Social Studies. We're going to establish our determination of mastery, recovery opportunities for equivalent measures in collaboration with the content area directors. The governor's K-12 Graduation Council will release their report in December 2025, December 31st, as we saw, and we anticipate that there may be a need to revisit our CD and graduation requirements. And last, we're gonna start to process, we're gonna start the process to revise the pupil progression plan. There will be an opportunity to explore the inclusion of civics, African-American history, Latino-American history, and financial literacy in college and career readiness coursework. Thank you.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Poe and Dr. Johnson and Chief St. Lawrence. I know that School Committee members might have questions, or Vice Chair Naylor and I doing it with Dr. Denal. Just to clarify it again, we want to give all our students the best opportunity, especially student athletes. I just was a little, I wanted to clarify that they put a D-, and I guess that's a state put that in. I'm just saying, I thought, you know, maybe it'd be a C-, or a D. I think we used to have 2.0 or something play by. I just, I know Latonia had a question on it too. Is that a little too low? I mean, a D-?
According to the guidelines, students must, you know, pass the course, and at this time, a D- is passing.
Too many times told me on the state, Kyla. Yeah, and I know Latonia, I just, I'm not, I just.
If I may, this was definitely a point of discussion during subcommittee, and there was a great amount of concern that was shared around the current Springfield Public School policy that says a D- is passing. So it is a policy that will be updated and reviewed as we update and review the pupil progression plan, and we most definitely will align our pass rate with the research that says the power of a 2.0, and how that would open career and college opportunities to our students. So as we strive to increase rigor and align our curriculum to college and career standards, and ensure that we have high expectations for all, we will make sure that our pupil progression plan reflects that as well.
Thank that. Vice Chair Naylor, good job.
Actually, you said exactly what I was gonna say, and to Dr. Denal's point, we did have a very extensive conversation about this in subcommittee, because there is a concern, right, that if we were to raise it now, obviously without preparing our students and our staff, that it could have a detrimental effect on the graduation rates. But there's also the reality that if our students don't have at least a 2.0, we're setting them up for failure. There's a lot of scholarships that will not allow you to maintain the scholarship if you graduate and your GPA is too low. There's a lot of times when parents have called and complained and said, my child was all set to go on a full ride, and they just lost their scholarship because their GPA was too low. I didn't realize it was that low. How were they even playing with this GPA? And it's because of policy, right? And so we definitely need to have some deeper conversations, and I don't think it's just a conversation we have alone. I think it's a long-term conversation that we have, similarly to how we had the town hall conversations with the families, with the cameras, or other conversations around COVID. We were very intentional about involving the public, and I think that the parents and the students need to be a part of the conversation as well, because they're gonna be affected by it. And I think when, and I didn't want to say all this, but I guess being a parent of students who have graduated from the district, two of them have already, I have two more to go, one is graduating this year, and I'm really excited about it. There's a lot of things we've done at home to ensure that they're ready, right? That they're taking advanced courses and all of those things. But all parents don't know what it is that is available to them, nor do they know how to get assistance and support if there is an issue or concern about GPAs, et cetera. And then the last piece of it that we talked about, Mr. Mayor, was even making sure that our power schools or our other systems that communicate with our parents are updated, because a lot of times, the teachers are not putting the information in in a timely fashion. Parents don't know their kids are failing until the end of the semester. And obviously, that's not okay either. So there's a lot of pieces to this, I think, but as we all pay attention to what the circumstances are, then we can come up with solutions on how to remedy that, not casting blame, but saying, let's do this all together and find out where we all fit in.
Your Vice Chair Naylor. It's important points. We're not trying to discourage anybody, but we also want to empower you. She hit right on the head. But I don't know if we can do it this year, because she's right. The people said, we're played by the rules. But then the other point brought up is that you might have a full boat or a lot of help to go to a training institute or a college, and they say, ho, 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 timeout. Your great point's under 2.0. You're a no-go. So I'm glad that we need to relook at it. And also, I think that's very makeable for student athletes, too. But I just, when I saw it, D-, it's, so we're, I know some people might take it the other way, but we're really trying to help your child out. So thank you, Dr. Denal, and thank you, Vice Chair Naylor. Please, any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Chairman? Alice? Thank you. I just want to thank you, Dr. Johnson and Assistant Superintendent Poe, for putting this together. I do have a question on the minimum, the passing grade of a D-. You said that the state put out their guidance on the competency determination. Is that correct? But it did not include a D-, but what did it include?
The language is exactly the satisfactorily completing the coursework, which by our grading policy is credit attainment.
Okay. So we set the grade. School district does, okay?
Those policies were set previous to this guidance, but yes.
Okay. Then I have another question, because I think there's a little bit of confusion here. If we were to change it to say a C or a C-, there's a consideration slide here that you all put here, so it wouldn't matter whether or not a child, the ideal goal is for that child to meet every student, to be at a D, a C, whatever it is that we set as a school district to be the passing level, that threshold. But then there's considerations here in the slide provided that read that they can do a performance-based assessment if they don't get that grade. Number two, they can complete a capstone or a portfolio project. Number three, an equivalent measure such as college-level courses, advanced placement, dual enrollment, independent study, specialized project. So in other words, even if we did change it to a C, and we did it today, necessarily no student would be negatively held back, because some of those measurements, such as a capstone project, would be evaluated subjectively by a counselor or a teacher. Is that correct?
I think the one comment that I would have is, is there enough time to implement a change like that when the students had been following the guidelines up until this point?
Sorry. Just remember, there are two things that students need in order to meet the CD requirement. It's mastery as well as the coursework. So I can't remember So I can't remember off the top of my head, but I think what you were referring to is the mastery portion. What the grade is referring to is the coursework portion. So when you read the alternative requirements, the alternative ways that a student can meet the C D requirements, you were referring to the mastery portion. It's a two, two components to CDs.
And for both of those components, Dr. Denal, in the initial bulleted consideration, the last one that I read on the mastery, the first one, which was satisfactory completing coursework, there still are two alternative ways in which that students can complete the coursework. Because I see here that they can do summer school and/or credit recovery or be scheduled to take additional coursework by their school counselor. So is that correct?
Coursework, yes.
So for, so for the coursework and the mastery, irrespective of where the district sets the bar, if it's a D, if it's a C, and frankly, I don't agree with D. And if it's a C, then that means that both for coursework and also for mastery, that students would have options to demonstrate both. Is that correct according to this presentation? Okay, because personally, I have an issue, and I think several of the practitioners in the room, and I heard you, Dr. Denal, that you're trying to move this in the right direction as well, and also the vice chairwoman, by such a low standard of a D minus, what does that communicate to our students in the city of Springfield? I think it sends the wrong message, especially when higher ed institutions won't tolerate that, even put folks on academic probation and remove them from their institutions. So I think when we talk about, you know, the theme, which I think it's great that you've taken on, and Dr. Johnson, you brought that guest speaker, I believe, this past spring, do we really believe in our students? I think a D to me says that we don't believe. I think a C says we do believe. And according to this presentation, if it moved to a C, there's so many alternatives, both to demonstrate coursework competency and also mastery, according to the presentation provided here. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And with Vice Chair Naylor, we discussed, there is also a lot of tutoring that is available. We don't want to hurt athletics, but I just think you got, you know, we have to look at, at the least D plus or C minus. At the very least. But as Mr. Gonzalez, there's a multitude of program all the way to summer school. But I just, I don't know, I just seen a D minus. I said enough. So are we, are we going to now, a quick question for Dr. Denal and the team and Vice Chair Naylor. We could not really technically do anything about it right now this year because they're saying, hey, we play by the rules. So any adjustments we make would take effect for the next school year.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Gonzalez, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that according to the presentation here, there's some guidance that's going to be coming down from the Commonwealth. Is it around December anyways? You know, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we send this back to committee to really chew on this some more because there's guidance that's going to be coming out anyways in December that's going to require updates and amendments. Would that hurt?
Yes, because this is for the class of twenty twenty-six, which is our current seniors. And we have to remain mindful of is that the guidance that the K twelve council will present to us in December, we're going to need to take that under advisement as well as Assistant Superintendent Poe's team supporting leading the, our efforts to see if we need, how we're gonna go about revising the pupil progression plan, et cetera, including the grading framework. So it would impact the current graduating students.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, considering that we have, it looks like we have to pass this determination, competency determination. In your professional estimation, Dr. Johnson, would it affect this current school year, this current graduating body, if we made a decision to change the grade requirement, given the fact that there are a multiplicity of options that lie within this presentation for them to demonstrate the competency and the coursework irrespective of the grade?
Yes, it would. We would need to definitely scale up what those opportunities might look like. When we roll out our pupil progression plan, we roll it out, starting with students entering ninth grade so that we build and scale up capacity to be able to offer whatever it might be to our academic program. So it would, and also keeping in mind that our policy, our revised C D policy is due by December thirty-first.
Yeah, I understand that. And I'll leave with this one, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm a big believer in uniformity. And for me, for this body, this year, to come and set a D standard for twenty twenty-six graduates, and then in twenty twenty-seven to say, oh, we're going to update it, we're going to go up to a C. So in twenty-six, we let a cohort of graduates out of the city of Springfield at such a low standard, and we sealed it, stamped it, approved it because of whatever reasons were. And then a following year, we're going to say, okay, now we're going to raise the standard because it was too low, we didn't have time, or we couldn't build the capacity. I mean, given all those facts and given the fact that, yes, there may be the need to scale up, and there's all these alternatives that exist, I'm not prepared to support this. Not because, one, I love the way that the ballot question went. By the way, I was a big proponent getting rid of this MCAST as a requirement. I'm not prepared to support this this evening because a D, to me, sets the wrong message to students, to families that live in the city of Springfield, to say that us, as adults and professionals, we're saying, if you get a D minus, we'll graduate you. And those are the things that we hear from the workforce on some of the negative feedback loop that, you know, these students really weren't prepared. Those are some of the things we do hear. We hear a lot of positive things. We also hear some of the negative feedback loops in terms of the students that we're putting out into the workforce or into higher ed institutions. So with that being said, I won't be supporting this. It appears that folks want to move forward with a D as the standard for students in Springfield, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So all of the comments that we've heard here this evening were all discussed in Curriculum and Programs Subcommittee. All very valid concerns, all things that we have pledged to look at. But if we don't pass it tonight, as you heard from Dr. Johnson, there are serious indications or implications. And if we don't pass it this evening, what ends up staying in place is what we adopted in March twenty, March of twenty, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, which those, that particular policy and that criteria is actually lower than what is being suggested tonight. So if you look at the coursework requirements back in March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, they were only, or students or the court, the competency determinations were only requiring English nine and English ten. If we don't pass what's before us this evening, which is requiring nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, we actually are, are holding the bar lower. I understand the D minus, and there are two separate issues here at play. This, this work that's before us, and we have to go back and change our grading policy, which are two separate things. If we don't change our grading policy first, this is not in alignment with it. And so it was exactly what we talked about in the subcommittee meeting. We need to take a look at our grading policy, our grading policy. We need to talk about whether or not we want to increase that above the D minus, which it sounds like is the will of this body because of all of the reasons that were stated. That is completely separate from here because if we, if we don't, if we, for whatever reason, there's an amendment and we say, no, we're only going to do a C, we're not in alignment. It's not complimentary of one another. And then the last thing I will say is that I think that we are a district that uses data to help us inform our decisions. And so what we did ask Dr. Denal and her team to do at the subcommittee meeting was to come back to us and say, this is how many students stand to be impacted by this decision if we were to increase it beyond the D minus. To the mayor's point, we cannot move the goalpost right now because there are a slew of students who could be sitting, ready to graduate. Granted, they may not be prepared with a D minus. I get it. I agree with everything that was said. But I just wanted to, more importantly, take into consideration that the March twenty-seventh policy that we passed is lower than what we are proposing this evening.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank my colleague for her thoroughness in putting this through your committee. But I do need to address the fact that the competency determination is due at the end of December. We're sitting here today on September fourth, and it sounds like that the subcommittee has already asked of data to then prove that there would actually be a detrimental effect to students if we were to change it to a D minus, a D plus, a C minus. So what I'm saying to this body, I just asked the question, and I know you're chairing on the programs and curriculum. Why not wait until we get this data pulled from this cohort and look at it, given the fact that it's going to run until it's only due in December of thirty-one? So it sounds like there's a couple of issues that need to be handled, both the grading, the grade piece, that's a district policy, the competency determination, if we change that, and what are the actual implications on that? Again, I just, I don't see the urgency tonight, given the fact of a December thirty-one timeline, when we, I believe we can make a much more informed decision with that actual data that you've already requested that'll come out of your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Through Dr. Denal and Vice Chair Naylor. Dr. Johnson, could you please indicate, I understand there is a percentage that will be affected, maybe more than thirty percent playing by the rules and of students? Can we just clarify that? And again, these are, that would be affected if there was a change implemented?
I believe Mr. Mayor is referring to the data that we had last year when we were looking at something very similar. I'm not sure.
I was gonna say, that was like five years ago. It seems like.
Oh, no, no, I'm just, I'm just saying.
But we did, when we initially were preparing for the March adoption, we did look at the implications for students who may have a grade of a, a D or lower. We did look at that just to kind of get a sense of where we were with our graduating class. But I just want to, it's twofold, even if, even if there was a pause to kind of look at data. We currently have seniors sitting in seats. They've made it to senior year. And the grading piece is a broader conversation that requires a lot of thought in that process. And I hear the consensus around that must be addressed. And we can do that while we also, you know, move forward with the policy revision because we have the guidelines from Desi to do so. And I just want to remind us that the grading policy has been the grading policy for decades. So we're not suggesting that the bar be lowered. We have been before this body, and you're going to hear a little more tonight about readiness. And it's going to support the work that must happen for our students. But we also want to be mindful of those students that are with us now, and we have to look at a policy, our C D policy, to ensure that we are in alignment with the state guidelines and expectations of us.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And in a good stead, when MCASTs were around, our graduation rate was in the eighty percentile. And our dropout rate, we dropped as low as one point nine, maybe after COVID, three point something. So, you know, we were in the lower to upper eighty percentile with MCASTs. So, you know, our students are talented. I just think that right now, we might, we're going to look at it, but I mean, right now, the timing is of the essence. And we probably, we probably would need an affirmative vote on this with adjustments forthcoming.
We definitely will be back before you because of the K twelve graduation council revisions to whatever other supporting policies to support our students in their post-secondary plans.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Collins.
Unfortunately, this conversation has made a fruit salad and mixed three very different things together. What we're being asked to do is to come in line with the state's competency proposal. We need to do that. That's one thing. We spent a lot of time talking about grading and pupil progression plans. Those are very complex items. They are, they, we need to examine lots of research. We need to get lots of input. Pupil progression is going to be the professionals basically talking about it. Grading is going to have a great impact on the community, so that's going to take even another level. So these are not things that you change like that. Let's just make a motion and change it. These things take study and take proposals that have been well thought out. So what we're being asked tonight is just come in compliance with the state, and I think we should do that.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I'll just rest by saying this. I believe that every student in the city of Springfield is deserving of a quality education. And this school system should attest that they were provided a quality education, not by saying that a D minus is sufficient for them to cross the graduation stage just because we need to do research, just because we have to scale out capacity. I understand the expressions and the sentiments of my colleagues that decisions like this can't be made so hastily or with a snap of a finger. But respectfully, the majority students, student body in this district that are Latino and African-American, I believe that it's, if it's a decision that's going to determine the standard that we're setting, it's irresponsible because when they move on to higher ed institutions, it is not a realistic standard. So while other people would like to hold it up, go to committee, research it, do X, Y, and Z, I will vote no against this competency determination because it is not reflective of what students in Springfield deserve. Tonight, this competency determination, with all due respect to the professionals that prefered it, have a lot of deference for all of you, but a D does not reflect what I believe should be true for all students in the city of Springfield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. There's a motion on the floor. Motion by Ms. Gresham, her second. Second by Ms. Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Attorney Murphy. Absent. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Gresham.
Yes.
Ms. Hurst.
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor.
Yes.
Here, sorry, no.
Yes, morning, this is a vote, it's a matter of access. Thank you very much. D is to approve the consideration of naming the street in honor of memory of Dan Kavanaugh, Duggan Academy. And I know that Christine Lassard and Executive Principal April Robinson and former Principal Mike Calvinies are here, and Pat Roach and Ricardo Arribas. And I'd also like to thank Tom Ash, too, and I want to thank the school committee for the vote indulgence. Dan was beloved by everyone. I know my wife Carla would say that, too. And I think the line of the night was when he said, do you have any, geez, you must have kids? And he says, no, I don't. I have five hundred kids at Duggan, and he would go above and beyond. It's great to acknowledge, you know, many times you have the leaders that are out front, always in the public, but you also have leaders from behind the scenes that went above and beyond. I thank you. And let me turn it over to Superintendent Denal, and I know the Duggan family is here, so I'm sure they might want to say a few things as do school committee members. Superintendent Denal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. The evidence of Mr. Kavanaugh's commitment to his learning community could be seen every time he walked the grounds of Duggan or entered the building. The building was always kept in excellent shape. I commented a few times, knowing the age of the building and how beautiful it was. The floors are gleaming. There's nothing out of place. He just did an excellent job. And as Mr. Mayor already so eloquently stated, he was fully committed to Duggan, the children, the staff, and he was a leader, a true leader and an honorable individual. I've heard several people speak highly of him. We just thank him for his years of service, and I had him in mind when we paused for a moment of silence during convocation to just acknowledge all that he did for us as well as to acknowledge that his legacy will remain. Thank you so much for the suggestion. It was sent to subcommittee. There was conversations about a feasibility study to be conducted to ensure that we are aligning with our policy and protocol. aligning with our policy and protocol for this naming honor, and we do believe that it is indeed an honor. We will provide the information as requested by subcommittee, but we still placed it on the agenda for a vote this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Denal. And then when the family be notified, the ceremony, we'll make sure that the proper signage is there on it. I don't know if there's any questions or comments first from school committee members, and I'm going to turn it over to the Duggan family. Mr. Collins, any questions? Ms. Hurst?
I believe it was, I was at the subcommittee, whose subcommittee, it came out unanimously.
Thank you.
It did, and I'd make a motion to vote to approve the consideration of the naming of a street.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Hurst, and I'm sure we'll have a second and a second. Second by Mr. Collins, and before we vote on it, I'm sure that the Duggan family would like to say a few words, and Christine, thank you, and April.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all of you for this process. The Duggan family is always asking for updates, like, what's going on? Is it going to go through? I said, I fully believe that it's going to get passed. The students will be so thrilled, as well as Mr. Kavanaugh's family, they've also reached out to us. So it's just a big thank you to all of you for taking your time to, to look over our proposal and honor Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Executive Principal Robinson and Director Calvinies.
Good evening. Thank you so much, and this is very important, and thank you for taking time during this very troubling year for, for me personally. So this has really touched my heart. I personally thank for each one of you for allowing this to happen, and this is just monumental right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Principal Robinson. Director Calvinies?
I just want to thank, first, thank you, Ms. Hurst, for the motion to approve. Thanks, Ms. Lassard, for bringing this forward to our, our school community right away. She was the first thing that she brought to us when we lost Dan, and just want to say, I worked with Dan for 10 years, just a great man, just a great, great man, really cared about the kids, never complained, took things by the horn and ran with it, and he was a good man. And one of the final things I told the staff at Duggan, when I, talking to him outside, and looking at the beautiful complex that we have there at Duggan, thanks to the city and to the school committee, he turned to me and said, "You know, Mike, it's been a really good run." And that was one of the last conversations I had with Dan, but it was just so, such a, such a good man. And so thank you for this honor for him, and thank you Superintendent Denal for supporting it as well.
It was, you could see at the funeral at the Mother Mary Hope Church, it was a standing room only crowd and beautiful mosaic of the respect on it, so fantastic. Thank you to the Duggan family, and again, the motions and second have been made. Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy, absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Sarno?
Yes, board's official votes matter passes. This one's for you, Dan. Okay, thank you. Presentations, A, Middle School Transformation, Dr. Yolanda Johnson, Dr. Deitriz Johnson, Andrea Williams, and Principal Yara de Palma Gonzalez from the South End Middle School, who has a great mural that she can see every day, the Italian Sunday Dinner that we did to Italian Culture. So thank you for being there, by the way, too. Like, like fam, all family, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to have this presentation. As you know, Middle School Transformation is one of our four district priorities. We're grateful that we have an amazing team that will present to you on what we are doing currently to lift the joy of learning, to restore the rigor and the excellence, and to ensure that our students continue to thrive and grow and be their best selves during these uncertain adolescent years. So often, we can remember the things that we did, back in my day, it was called junior high school, but the things that we, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the things that we did during those years in middle school, I remember fondly my time, and I say fondly, my time at Kylie. Kylie was state-of-the-art, amazing opportunity, still puts a smile on my face when I think of my years in those grades. And I know that our principals, as well as the leadership of Chief Johnson, will definitely cause all of our students in Grade 6, 7, and 8 to have the same smiles on their faces many years later, just as I do today. So I applaud you in advance, and thank you for all your hard work, and we have some great exciting news of things that we have already achieved and accomplished for our middle school transformation. So without further ado, I will let them bring this to your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Denal.
Thank you, Superintendent Denal, and good evening again. One thing I want to ask you to do is to just rewind a little and think about our middle schoolers that spoke this evening. Much, a lot, all of what they shared, because we were in the corner kind of having a sidebar, really reflects this transformation process. And one of the things that school committee member Hurst asked of us when we were here in March, I believe it was March, and she said, "What do you need from us?" And I want to, I want you to, when you hear the presentation tonight, you know, you will hear the progress, the work that's happening, but more importantly, how these four priority areas connect to post-secondary success. So what we need from you is to listen, enjoy, ask, continue to ask us very thoughtful questions, but also understand the implications this work has for policy and guidelines for us moving forward. So without any further ado, I'm going to call up Principals Williams and Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Denal, school committee members. As part of this process of transforming middle school, Principal Williams and I were tasked in the spring with taking a look at our schedule and creating one that supported each of our four district priorities and leveraged the time that we have with educators and students. We know that we can't change the amount of time educators and students are with us per day, but what we can do is actually impact what we do with that time, how we allocate that time to enrich and support both educators and students. Now, as a science teacher for life, and my very linear habits of being very linear in my thought processes, this was challenging work. We worked with, we have some thought partners through DESI ERS. We were able to work through some of the challenges and to really think outside the box and create a schedule that we feel will support both our students and our educators.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Some of the challenges that we expected or anticipated, there are certain constraints that you have when you're working within a small school, staffing needs as well as capabilities, as well as what our students' needs may be, that vary from acceleration to intervention supports. So through the process that we worked together collaboratively, as well as with our thought partners, we were able to create ways to utilize the time that we had, maximize that time, in some cases, extending class periods by just 10 or 11 minutes, bought us additional time for our core instruction by an hour at the end of the week for each area. So just being creative and having those thought partners really made a difference and allowed us to build out opportunities for students, providing opportunities for unique courses, thinking about exactly what students need. Not every child needs intervention. Acceleration was our thoughts throughout the process. Dr. Johnson ensured that in everything that we did, it's not just intervention, it's acceleration. So where students need intervention, they will definitely get what they need, providing sometimes double doses of either ELA or math within a day. Students who are language learners, for example, would have their services, but also have the opportunity to take encore courses and not be excluded from opportunities like any other student. So found ways to add to our schedule.
We did. I think we could probably all agree that when you're looking at a school's schedule, it will tell you what the priorities are within that particular building. And Principal Williams and I are aligned, and we're clear that the areas that you see listed on this slide are our priorities. And because my amazing kiddos showed me up already and shared some information ahead of time, you can see that this is ongoing work, this is real work, and this is work that we're committed to continue to do.
In addition, being that we are the two true middle schools of Springfield Public Schools, being that we are 6, 7, and 8, we tried to find opportunities where we could collaborate. For example, Principal Gonzalez may have one teacher that teaches two grades. Is there an opportunity with our schedule that we could have shared opportunities or cross-school collaboration for planning purposes or professional learning opportunities? So our schedules are not identical, but they are aligned in such a way that we can partner together and work shoulder to shoulder to build our schools.
My college and career plan, we affectionately refer to it as MYCAP, and that is a tool that, that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has rolled out across the Commonwealth. It's not a requirement, but it aligns with the district's priorities around ensuring that every student graduates from Springfield Public Schools with a post-secondary plan, whether it be college, military, career, and set them up for a life that they can earn a family sustaining wage. We start this process in 6th grade, and by the time our students move through middle school and through high school, they are engaged in units and lessons that support them around their interests, their goals across academic, personal, social, and post-secondary. And that happens using SchoolLinks, which is a platform, a digital platform, that moves with students regardless of which middle school they attend in the district or high Next slide?
I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson, I just want you to acknowledge that, oh, the increase in MYCAP.
Yes.
The significance of this, because it really speaks to the individualized learning and the joy that we bring back to the middle school. So if you could just elaborate, and if you could just point out a couple of the tasks, I know that there are a number, but if any come to mind, I, we would love to hear what some of those tasks are.
Some of those tasks are our students setting goals and connecting their goals to their academic, their academic plans in school. So it could be their goals around ELA, math, social studies, science, et cetera, and students really aligning their goals with their interests. So students learn about themselves, you know, they engage in inventories to learn about how they learn, what their interests are, and what their career pathway might be. And when they do that, start that process in a middle school, it really sets them up for when they are in 8th grade to really make good decisions about the high school they want to attend. So we have a city that is rooted in legacy, so my mom went to Central, I'm going to Central. But someone's passion really might be in, whether it could be cosmetology or the fine arts, and really, another high school might really support that plan. So MYCAP really is designed to be intentional around supporting students around their goals and their plans, and it could change, which is why it's Grade 6 through 12. And we really just want to be able to support students with that. And so as you see here, this is a really, something to be proud of. We work collaboratively with Chief St. Lawrence's team to really track and monitor our data. So if you would see in the 23, 24 school year, we were under 25% usage rate across our middle schools. But if you notice, in this past school year, with focus and intention around really helping students identify their joys, what they want to do in their life, we have increased significantly in this past school year, and we are expected to continue to do well. Help, you know, so we're, we're excited about that. And really prioritizing it, because sometimes students don't understand, why is English important? Why is math important? And helping them connect that to their goals is so important. So, did I cover that? Okay, next slide. So, middle school readiness for high school success. And there's research from the University of Chicago that pretty much demonstrates that the grades that a student receives in middle school, particularly 8th grade, is a predictor of college matriculation and success. So the conversation we had earlier aligns with this slide here, because we also, the research also talks about the fact that students with a C or higher have a greater likelihood of going to college and succeeding in college. And we did backtrack that data with our students to confirm that that is the case, which is why we are really leveraging this work pre-K through 12, aligned with our priorities, but looking at it from each of those four priorities and really leaning into being very thoughtful about what we're doing and why under our post-secondary success priority area. Next slide, and I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Deitriz.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to talk to you about what our secondary math department has done to support our middle school transformation, and there are basically three things. The first is providing equitable, equitable access for all of our students. And to provide equitable access to our, first, for our 8th graders, we wanted to offer Algebra I to all students. You heard the students mentioned earlier from South End, that for the first time, they have been provided access to Algebra I. And so we're proud to say that this year, we are offering Algebra I in several middle schools, including Conservatory, Renaissance, STEM, Zenetti, and we're offering Algebra Readiness in South End. And we're also focusing on professional development for our educators. So we know that in order for this to be a successful experience for our students, then our educators need to have that professional development. So we've developed a schedule to focus on the Algebra I that's found in the framework and support our middle school educators on professional development. So we're looking forward to that. And the third thing is that we are focusing on supporting our students. So we know that we are receiving students who probably would not have chosen to this path, so we reached out to families and invited all of our students to join us to, for Algebra I. But we know that there may be some students who need support, and so we're looking to open a Saturday Success Academy, or just some type of academy that we can support our students who may need a little extra support with the prerequisite skills. We also want to focus on growth mindset. We want to, our students to know that we believe in them and that they can access, and they can have an equitable mathematics learning experience. And we also want to ensure that we have the support of everyone, everyone in the community. And we are offering, we are inviting you all to join us in October. We are presenting a documentary, a math documentary called Count It Out, and it focuses on the detrimental effects of our students who are deficient in math skills and the effects that it has on their access to career pathways. And also, it focuses on how we reform math education so that our teachers will combat that math anxiety that our students are experiencing, and that they will have better math confidence and build their math confidence, and just increase their pathways to career and college and other opportunities. Thank you.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you, but also particularly School Committee Member Barbara Gresham for her ongoing advocacy and insistence that we get our middle school students onto college campuses. So when we were here in March, thank you. When we were here in March, that was one of the questions that was asked about opportunities that we would provide during the summer, and Dr. Johnson and her department definitely made the opportunity available, and we definitely made it happen. STEM had more than 25 students that attended on that trip on that day in July. Part of the process of preparing the students was they were encouraged and participated every single day in a project that had a focus around college and career readiness and social-emotional learning, where students looked at real-world problems. and social-emotional learning, where students looked at real-world problems connected to the Flint water crisis and developing empathy for others that go through certain situations, but then problem-solving and doing research. How would you solve the problem? Who would you have on your team to make a difference in impacting the solution that you proposed? And what would it need, what would you need to become someone in that career? So then they started doing research on different careers, college experiences, and it thoroughly prepared them for that college experience once they attended in July. As Johnny Castro mentioned, he was one of the students that attended, and just the experience of hearing the kinds of questions and conversations that they had, not only with the college representatives, but with the staff that attended. Questions like, "Well, you're already a teacher, why are you still in school?" And so, having those conversations, it could be just a couple of seconds, but it will become an ongoing conversation that really builds their confidence to know that they can do it too.
Thank you, Principal Williams.
First, I want to say I am obsessed with the fixing Flint curriculum that we ran this summer. We had a counselor run our summer program, the curriculum, it's amazing. And I also just want to share regarding MYCAP, as someone who's worked at the high school for 15 years before moving down to middle school, I am so excited to kind of see this college-career conversation coming down to grades six, seven, and eight. And I also really like the platform. I prefer the platform to Naviance, I think it's easier to, or more user-friendly. And I think what's really made a huge difference, just I know in my building, is that it's, college and career conversations are for everybody, not just your school counselor. And so we're looking forward to continuing that work through our college-career block. But I just wanted to shout that out because I love the MYCAP platform. But, we also had the opportunity to go to Westfield State this summer, and some students were so excited. It was our first college visit. We had a fancy ride, which the kids loved. We went in a big, beautiful bus, and we had an amazing time. We got to tour the campus. The campus was really alive, there were a lot of programs happening, even though it was the summer, you would think it'd be a little bit more kind of subdued. Oh no, it was a very vibrant campus during this time. We got to tour different classrooms, we got to tour the dorms, and yes, the kids loved the dining, because who doesn't love college dining? But, but they also were asking really amazing questions and having really amazing conversations about college. And we heard kids talking to each other, you know, what would they study in college? What would they do? I even had some kids who were planning on being roommates in college. So, there was a lot of really great conversation, and I'm excited to kind of see this continue and us going on more and more college visits at the middle school.
Thank you, Principal Gonzalez. I'd like to, through Superintendent Denal, thank you for the team, Principal Gonzalez and Principal Williams, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Deitris. Chris Collins, you remember this very, very well, and Denise, your mother-in-law, former school committee woman, Marge Hurst, became mayor 18 years ago. This is the first thing we were tackling, that we had to do something about our middle schools to keep the connection going. And now tremendous work has been done on that, but I remember that distinctly. What do we need to do to stop the more positive things that had to go on in our middle school? It's a tough age, adolescent age, so this brings joy to my ears on it. Great work, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments. See what I can.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Vice Chair Naylor.
First, I have a comment. The first comment is, Principal Gonzalez, I had one of your students with me the other day, and we were asking them, what school do they go to? I always ask that, that's like the first question I ask a student, "What school do you go to?" And the young man said, "I go to South End Middle School." And I said, "Oh, you do?" I said, "How do you like it?" He said, "I love my principal, I love it, it's great." So, it's not just about the excitement we have as adults, right? How are our children receiving it? And to hear him so excited about the school and speaking so highly about his experience, the other young people in the car are like, "Oh, I go to this school, it's not as fun, it doesn't sound like I have as much fun as you do." You know, so it's really cool. But, so I wanted to give you those kudos, just watching you over the last few years grow into your role and really embracing it with such passion is beautiful to see, but it's definitely a testament when a student says the same thing. So I wanted to share that with you. So I have a question, though, I do. My question is, one of the students brought up earlier today during the speak-out, that they would love to have more time to engage with their peers, recess, or whatever the case may be, and I love the schedule that you have here and understand why it's applicable, right, for the, for the goals. And I wonder, what kind of time do you give the students to just unwind, to be able to kind of reset, so that they are able to have that moment to get right back into the studies and do what they need to do?
Yes, so we do have crew, I believe advisory is what you may speak of. Our schedules are somewhat similar, so there's at least 25 minutes every day where the students have an opportunity with a primary person, a caring person, where they can kind of check in, do some, you know, character development conversations, maybe some college and career readiness opportunities. And then there's typically an extended block on Friday, and we will call it different things. There, I think it's Funky Friday one place and Fun Friday somewhere else. But again, extended opportunity, whether we do community building, we may have guest speakers come in around college and career-themed conversations, and so just building the community, but also opportunities for us to address the needs of the students socially and emotionally.
Thank you.
I do think at South End something, and I was sitting here, Kalid was listening to the other presentations, he's like, "Wait, they have recess? What about us?" So, you know, we're limited on green space, so the way that we've built our schedule this year leaves our gym open during the lunch block. So what we've been doing with our, we started with our sixth graders, is we split the lunch and they go to open gym, we call it open gym, so it's a little more mature than recess. And so the kids go to open gym if they want to, they don't have to, or they can remain in the caf for the remainder of their lunch. That's kind of a way for the kiddos especially, our sixth graders, because they're coming from the elementary school, and that's a tough transition, to kind of get some energy out and get them kind of ready and excited for the remainder of our day. But I agree, the importance of students being able to have access to kind of like that reset and that opportunity to get some energy and some wiggles out before they kind of continue with their day. So we started with six, and I was telling Kalid, I'm like, "You guys are in eighth grade now." So, we'll work our way through the grade levels, but definitely sixth grade is like ready to go when it's time to go to open gym and line up. And they've been so good at transitioning to the gym and then transitioning back to class, so it's been really great.
Principal Gonzalez, do you, if you can, can, do you utilize the Angie Florian? I know it's a pocket park we made, if there's any possibilities, if you think it's beneficial. I know it's a pocket park more for smaller kids, but...
We actually do our gym classes when weather permits.
Good.
Our gym will bring the kids to the park.
Good, good, good. Any other questions, Ms. Gresham?
Thank you for a wonderful presentation, and I can see the passion and the excitement in you guys, so I know you're enjoying what you're doing. And I had planned to go on that bus trip with you guys, but unfortunately I had a funeral, so next time I will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham, for facilitating. I know, Westfield State, my alma mater, I couldn't make it, I, thanks for the invite, there was no way I can make my schedule.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I do have...
Yes, Vice Chair Naylor.
I just remembered, I wrote it on a different page. So the other question that I had, I know we spoke of this right before the break, I think, going into the summer. Dr. Denal, we talked about the alternative schools, which, we don't like saying alternative schools, but we know we're talking about our schools, I call them specialty schools, right? They specialize in different things. And I wonder if when we do the MYCAP, are there indicators that students should be in a different environment, a unique learning environment, like Gateway to College or something like that? Or is it just about a general going to the next level for post-secondary to our regular schools?
You mean when, you mean when our middle schoolers are getting ready for...
Yeah, so like, because I remembered you mentioning, like, it helps them to decide, maybe I don't want to go to Central, because my kids did that to me. I'm an Eagle all the way, and they all decided to go to Putnam, but you know, it was, my husband went to Putnam, so I let him get away with that. But it was about them wanting to like do a specific trade, right? And they're like, "Well, Putnam has electric, that's what I want to do. I don't want to just go to Central just because mom went." And I'm glad they made that, you know, advocated for themselves to do that. And then one of them is at SCOTUS right now, right? So it does, it is good when the students know their options. So I love that that's an opportunity, but I also know realistically that some of our students do need a different environment that's not the traditional pathway.
Absolutely, and one of the really nice components of the college and career planning is that it does allow for, we have a scope and sequence that allows for specific information to be shared with students around the variety of high schools and connecting that with what they have indicated in their plan. And our counselors and our teachers will be working with our students around that to help them make those decisions and choices, even if it includes our specialty schools. So that's a part of the advising that will happen with students to get them ready to make their selection for high school. And then of course, whatever the requirements are to be able to look at some of those specialty schools, we will do that in collaboration with Chief Jacobs, who oversees those programs.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons why I asked the question is that sometimes our families have a stigma when it comes to going to our specialty schools and assume it's like only the bad kids or all these things, and that's not the case. And so I think knowing that there are schools, or there's an after dark program at SI Tech or whatever the case, that they know that there's options, and everyone is not getting up at 7:00 AM, going to school until 3:00 or whenever it is, 2:00 PM. It may be a different need, right? And it may, for whatever reason, and I think that we've done a really good job of ensuring that these are options, but I also sometimes feel like there's a stigma attached to those options, where families don't always feel like it's a good idea for their students to enroll because they think this is not a good thing, or they're bad, or it's a lost cause. Like, no, this is good, like, they should be here, this is great and a great opportunity for them. And a lot of kids do go to college or whatever, going through our specialty schools. So, I, I just always like to advocate for the marginalized folks and for the educators that work so hard in those settings to make sure that our students are successful.
I, Vice Chair Naylor brings up a good point, because when you're at our high school graduations at Symphony Hall, when you hear those graduates speak heartfelt words they give on the specialty schools that we have and how it's turned their lives around, and, you know, I'm not saying, well, somebody, we don't, we, we give an avenue for everyone to try to succeed in it, but when, there's sometimes, Chris, there's sometimes our best speakers when they get up there on it, because of the trials and tribulations that they've gone through.
I'd just like to give a shout out to one of our specialty middle schools, because the previous school year, it was that specialty middle school that was knocking it out the park with MYCAP. So they, you know, this is implemented throughout the district, grades six through 12. All students have access. And so, they're working with students as well around what their pathway might be after eighth grade as well. So it's really great to have students thinking about and planning what their next steps are.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the three musketeers here? Or four, the four horsemen, I should say, do you have that? Okay, thank you very, very much, I appreciate it. Good work, and thank you. Now we'll move to informational discussion items, reports, section six, reports of standing committees, student and parent concerns, Ms. Gresham. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is Building and Maintenance Committee, Mr. Gonzalez, please. The item that was before the body has been dealt with, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And again, for the viewing audience and the audience that's here, many a times you'll see us vote things through quickly. A lot of the hard work goes to the subcommittee leaders, they put hours into meetings before these votes come before our full board. Legislative Contract Committee, Vice Chair Naylor.
We did have a meeting, Mr. Mayor, and there was an informational item just for, more of a FYI than anything else, just in letting us know about some prospects that the district is looking at for legal services, and they wanted us to be aware of that. So they just went over that briefly, and the meeting went well.
Thank you, Vice Chair Naylor. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. The curriculum programs, could it be Ms. Hurst, please?
Mr. Mayor, we covered that during the meeting, it was that we went over the competency determination requirements.
Yeah, I appreciate all the due diligence on that. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. E, Budget Finance Committee, Vice Chair Naylor.
All items have been addressed on our agenda.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? F is Vocation Education Committee, Mr. Gonzalez. No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. G is Technology Committee, Mr. Collins, please. Thank you. H is School Safety Committee, Ms. Gresham.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. We did have a meeting on Tuesday regarding the Rebecca Johnson...
Thank you.
And we made some progress. Two of the gates have been locked.
Yes.
Aged and locked. But moving forward, the plan is to have surveillance cameras, surveillance notification, and also putting, changing the hours from dusk to dawn.
Which is part, yeah, I thank you, Ms. Gresham, and everybody on your efforts. Superintendent Dr. Denal, I spoke with Director Ash on it, see how we, we have been working together, what we can continually do that stays within the realm of people having, families having access to it.
Yes.
And it's safe, so good work on that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. I caught the tail end of the, of the meeting online, so I didn't get a chance to inquire during the meeting, but is it, do we have a policy, Dr. Denal, on staff being required or requested to go out and pick up needles and things like that? I was under the impression that that's something that the Department of Public Health would do, or New North Citizens Council, so many organizations that they have programs that do that. Is that okay for us to ask our staff to do that?
We don't, I am not aware of a policy that dictates who should be cleaning up the public parks that are adjacent to school grounds and that might impact our ability to use them during the school day. I'm not aware of a policy that dictates that. However, I know we are in conversation with Park and Rec, Tom Ash, as well as Chief Akers. They have both pledged their support to resolving this matter in a way that is student-centered and family-focused, as well as to ensure the safety of our staff members. Ms. Gresham did bring that up, and she, as well as other members of the subcommittee, did share that concern, and they wanted to, I just want to assure everyone that this is a work in progress, we made some initial great gains, but we are most definitely continuing to look at this, and that is one of the items that we will explore further.
And we also have Health and Human Service Commissioner Helen Cox, Harris involved.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, I just want to say this before we move on to the next item, that it does bother me if someone is asked and they don't want to do it. I just want to make sure that there aren't going to be any type of repercussions of a staff member who does not feel comfortable to do that. That's why I want to be sure that if we have a policy or don't, or what are the implications if someone says, "No, I don't feel comfortable doing that," that we are able to kind of respectfully appreciate their willingness or unwillingness to do something on that order. I know I don't feel comfortable, so I'm not going to ask somebody to do something I won't do. But some people might feel it's the duty of the folks to do it or something like that, and I, I just don't know what the will of the district is, but I definitely want to share my concern if that's something our folks are being required to do because they're being asked, and maybe they feel compelled that they have to.
And I know that the school staff that does do it, there's protocols on it too, and if it is that, then you just would, I would isolate the area and make the proper call for someone else to come out there and properly dispose of it, but that's a good point. Ms. Gresham, anything else on that? You, you, good, thank you for your work on that. Any questions or other comments on that? Hearing none. I is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ms. Hurst, please. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. We still await our new student representative to come on board, he or she, and they've always done a great job. Now we'll move to the report of the Superintendent Dr. Denal. Again, I want to commend her and her staff, convocation was absolutely fantastic. I want to thank my, my first press secretary years ago, is Bel Kavan. Marty Kavan, your team, you're a great job, let me tell you, those kids, that Javion and Elijah, Elijah really ended up stealing the show, which, and Javion, by the way, is going to do the Pledge of Allegiance at the State Democratic Convention here at the Mass Mutual Center. I think I'm bringing greetings next Saturday or something like that. That kid's got moxie. But, but the facial expressions of Elijah. He, he, boy, I...
But the facial expressions of Elijah, he, boy, I was able to play, we were able to play off that so, so well. I know we're going to do the mayor and superintendent for the day, too. Superintendent Dr. Denal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I will do my best to keep it brief. I know that it was time well spent today in all that we had to accomplish and achieve. So I do appreciate your endurance. For just about five more minutes, I will curtail what I was going to say, but I will make sure that I bring up a couple of things that must be shared. I want to assure our families in our community that we are listening and we are responding. And I'm referring to the numerous emails and phone calls that I've received, as well as many, many members of the school committee have received concerning our student assignment services, the processes and the protocols that sometimes cause a delay in our ability to enroll your students. We acknowledge your frustration. We thank you for your patience. And because of your concern, it has fueled our efforts to ensure that we come up with a solution. I have turned this over into the very capable hands of our Assistant Superintendent of Family and Community Engagement and Partnerships. He has done his due diligence. He has worked over the summer and has had many meetings to make sure that the team at SAS is working efficiently and effectively. The good news is Assistant Superintendent Escobano shared with me updated data compared to last year's processing time and this year's processing time, and it was a marked improvement. We do know that we still have room for improvement. And with that said, again, Assistant Superintendent Escobano has done his research and has found a software that will streamline the process, decrease the wait time, and significantly increase communication. So I applaud Assistant Superintendent Escobano and his efforts, and you all will definitely see a marked improvement in our processing time due to this new software, as well as other systems and processes that Assistant Superintendent Escobano and his team are putting into place. So we thank you for your patience and your understanding, and you have our commitment that we will continue to grow and improve and do better. And I know that some of you sent numerous emails. I appreciate each one of them. We respond quickly to each one of them, and we appreciate your advocacy and your voice in this matter. With that said, I will definitely touch on convocation. The mayor already shared the highlights of convocation. I have to reiterate my joy and excitement around what we experienced during convocation. I thank Chief Kavan for her hard work and her efforts. I shared with her my vision. She took that vision, she ran with it, she executed it beyond my expectations. The feedback from staff, family members, people I meet in the supermarket, folks that stop me, you know, while I'm getting my gas, everyone in the city is just so excited, no matter where they see me, to just remind me of the joy that they experienced while they were either in the auditorium, one of our many locations, or watching it on Focus Springfield. So again, thank you so much. I'm not going to say anymore. I'm going to invite Chief Kavan to come on up and introduce this video that will definitely share with everyone who didn't get a chance to watch or participate in convocation. It will share with you the joy that we experienced on that day. Strong start for our school year. Great for our educators. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Denal, Mayor Sarno, members of the school committee and the learning community of Springfield. What we have is a video that shows us, that shows our belief in our students, that came about because of the great vision and just the knowing of their students that our principals had. It's only because of them that this joy shines through. I gave them just one assignment, and we showed up, and they were ready. So thank you for the opportunity to present this once again, but this is our video. This is our city. These are our educators and our students, and this is our belief.
All right.
Excellent.
Excellent. That's a great ending there, too. Anything else, Superintendent?
There's nothing to add. That was the icing on the cake.
See, that was a drop the mic moment. Any questions or comments in Superintendent's report? Thank you, Dr. Denal. Any unfinished business? Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Collins. I've been sitting at this table, other than you, longer than any member on this committee. And through those years, we've had very difficult challenges. We've had tough issues, emotional issues, vigorous debates. Yeah. But never until this evening did I ever hear aspersions cast onto other members of the committee that somehow they didn't have the best interest of our students and believe in our students. And I, for one, found it offensive. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other unfinished business? Hearing none, any new business?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I want to go back to the comment or that statement that Superintendent made about the SAS, and definitely appreciate the research that Assistant Superintendent, good Lord, it's too late. Jose, that he's been working on. And I wanted to just bring up before we leave, if we could send us to a Budget, Finance, and Technology Joint Committee to get a better understanding of what this software is that he's looking into, so we can start to have the conversations around cost and being able to really talk about how we can upgrade our system. Because I know for me, I've received numerous calls, and I know that the staff were working diligently, so I'm never going to say it was because anyone didn't try to do their job. It was, it's just, when you have systems that are dated, it's time to upgrade. And we have a lot of AI and other things that can really help expedite the process for everyone and make the parents feel more included in the process. So I'm looking forward to the conversations. And so I just wanted to throw that out there so that the chairs of those two committees can get together and have a subcommittee on the agenda.
Thank you, Vice Chair Naylor, and thank you, Assistant Superintendent Jose Escobano, too. Obviously, we get through the Superintendent, Dr. Denal, we can get that information through, out to Azelle on our various media, social media, and websites that we have, too. Okay, I think that was unfinished business. Any new business? Hearing none?
Nope. I think it was unfinished business, and I am not trying to hold this up. Opening night of...
That's okay, Ms...
However, I did want to...
So who do you have, Philly or Dallas tonight?
Dolphins fan. So anyways, really quickly, though, to the point that Vice Chair Naylor just made about like the upgrading of technology and things of that nature, one of the, one of the things that I've heard, like feedback, I should say, because it's not a concern, but is, is there any way, because I'm one of those parents that have multiple children, is there any way to digitize those forms that get sent home that first week of school? Because especially if you have multiple children, like you're writing out all the emergency contact information over and over and over again. And so there's got to be a way for us to digitize that and for there to be something that allows you to do it for multiple children. I did have a mother at the bus stop say something to me, and I was like, I was thinking the same thing. So just wondering, like, there's got to be a way for us to be able to do that.
There's got to be a way, especially with technology.
Yes.
And how advanced it is. I am going to ask, and I know he's already taken note, taken of your request, but Bob St. Lawrence, Chief St. Lawrence is already on it. As soon as it comes out of your mouth, he's already on it. So rest assured, he will provide an update for us in the very near future of what we can and can't do, and then what we will do to ensure that we will be able to do it very soon. So I don't know what the system capacity is right now. He'll provide that information for us, but he'll also let us know what we need to do in order to make it a reality by the time that we have to enroll students again.
Bob, you got drafted. And as soon as he has the information, we'll schedule the Technology Committee so we can discuss it in depth. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead. Is this new business now?
Yes, it is. The other thing is that, because I want to give credit where it's due, and I don't see Chief Roach here, but I have to say, at least in my experience from years past, this year, the bus situation was amazing. Like, it is so great. And the app is so...
Yeah.
Oh, good.
We've always had a good, it was the glitch of the COVID-19, the pandemic, but no way, I mean, you hear the trials and tribulations in Boston, which I know, I don't cast into spurt. We've always had solid, and we, you know, we put them on notice. Get your act together, and with the school committee and subcommittee meetings and penalties, but yeah. And believe, believe you me, and all school committee members, if there's a problem with busing, the phones ring off the hook. So, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Hurst, is her second. Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy, absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Ms. Bruno Naylor?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, supportive official votes, matter passes. Good evening. Thank you for watching. Good health and God bless. Okay, it was a good meeting. Lot of good stuff.